Joining us. If you would like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website. On behalf of the body, I welcome the members of the public who have joined us here today. During stated meetings, only members of the council may speak. Members of the public shall remain silent. If you wish to express your support of any remarks, you may make the silent approval gesture. I want to remind my colleagues that decorum is to be respected at all times. Insulting each other is not appropriate. All remarks are to be addressed to the chair, and members shall not speak unless recognized by the chair. It is essential that even if we disagree, we treat each other with respect.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Abreu.
Present.
Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Botcher.
Present.
Brannon.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Present.
Carr.
Here.
De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Felder.
Here.
Felice.
Here.
Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Mar Marado.
Present.
Marte.
Present.
Mealy.
A hundred percent present.
Here.
Moreno.
Here.
Moya.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Moya.
Present.
Nurse.
Here.
Osay.
Present.
Palladino.
Present.
Powers.
Present.
Wrestler.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salam.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Shulman.
Here.
Stevens. Thank you. Ung.
Present.
Vernikoff.
I'm here.
Present.
Zhuang.
Here.
Present.
Farias.
Present.
Speaker Adams.
Present. Present. Present, can you hear me?
Yup, thank you.
Thank you.
We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Rabbi Dr. Keith Elijah Thompson.
Before I pray, could I just give a word of salutation? First, to the Speaker of the City Council, Adrian Adams, and to the members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen, I want to salute every one of you. And I'm here today, and I'm very proud of a young man, Kevin Christopher Riley. I remember, I hold him in my hand, right there in the Bronx, District 12, and I pray for him and baptize him, and I'm proud to see that he's serving in this great city, Council, and I salute him. Would you put your hands together and give the... Thank you very much. Let us pray. Gracious and eternal God, I come to you this day, lifting up the members of our City Council in prayer. I thank you for the many gifts and blessings you have bestowed on them. You have called each of them to a position of leadership, and we recognize the weight of that responsibility that they carried. I ask, dear God, that you will guide them with wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and Lord, this one, not everyone knows about it, an upperstanding fullness as they serve our city and its people. Grant them discernment to make wise decisions that will uplift our neighborhood, create opportunity for all. Let integrity be their foundation, justice be their aim, and peace be their legacy. Bless their staff, their family, and loved ones who support them in this work. Renew their energy for their hope when obstacles seem overwhelming. And above all, remind them that their service matters to you, holy God, to the city and to the generation to come. We thank you, and I thank you for their service, and we pray for unity among them to fulfill their duty with skillfulness. I pray that the Lord God of heaven will bless you and keep you in your going out and coming in, and cause his face to shine upon you and grant you his abiding peace. That real shalom, in the name of the almighty sovereign God, let everyone say amen. Thank you very much.
I would now ask Councilmember Kevin Riley to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you, Majority Leader. It is my honor to welcome Reverend Dr. Keith Elijah Thompson, who you all heard baptized me when I was a baby, I have the picture if anyone wants to see it, to the council chambers today. For over forty years, Dr. Thompson, known as the man in the community, has been a pillar of faith and leadership in the Northeast Bronx, building institutions, uplifting families, guiding generations through ministry, education, and service. From the founding Bronx Miracle Gospel Tabernacle to launching programs that empower our youth and adults alike, his impact has been felt deeply across our district and beyond. Thank you, Majority Leader. I thank Reverend Dr. Thompson for being here today, and I make a motion for unanimous consent to spread the invocation in full upon the record. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now ask Councilmember Lynn Shulman for the adoption of minutes.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of June 11th, 2025, be adopted as printed.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
Pre-considered M. 147, Community Development Program.
Finance.
M. 148, City Debt and Reserves.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
Communication from City, County, and Borough Offices.
Pre-considered Ms. 149 and 150, Budget Modifications.
Finance.
Petitions and Communications?
None.
Land Use Call-Ups?
Ms. 151 through 153.
Thank you. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on today's land use call-ups.
Abreu.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Botcher.
Aye.
Brannon.
Aye.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brooks Powers.
Aye.
Kabon.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Felder.
Aye on all.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye on all, except LU 297, which I abstained. Is that now?
Could you repeat that, please? I'm sorry.
Is it LU 297? No. All right. Just aye on all, I'm sorry, my mistake.
Thank you. Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Permission to vote on all land use call-ups and all items on the general orders calendar?
Permission granted.
I vote aye on all, and I am disclosing on the record for the council proceedings that Metropolitan Transportation Authority has funded in the budget we're adopting and my brothers associated with this entity. Thank you.
Mar Marado.
I vote aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Menin.
Aye.
Moreno.
Aye.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
Aye.
Osay.
Aye.
Palladino.
Aye.
Powers.
Aye.
Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Salam.
I vote aye.
Salamanca.
I vote aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Shulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Vernikoff.
I vote aye.
One.
Aye.
Zhuang.
I vote aye. I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
Aye.
Sorry, I'm back on, I had the...
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Zhuang, could you please repeat your vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of fifty-one in the affirmative and zero in the negative. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge and thank a few people from the council for their work throughout this process. It is my last budget as Speaker, and the last for our Finance Chair and several other members of our leadership team. I want to thank our Finance Chair, Justin Brannon, our leadership team of Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala, Majority Leader Amanda Farias, Majority Whip Silvina Brooks-Powers, and Councilmembers Keith Powers, Carlina Rivera, Rafael Salamanca, and Sandra Ung. I also want to thank all the members of the council's budget negotiating team, as well as the entire Finance Division staff, led by Deputy Chief of Staff for Finance and Chief Financial Officer, the CFO, Tanisha Edwards, and the Director of our Finance Division, Richard Lee. Last, but certainly not least, I want to thank members of my senior staff, Jeremy John, Faisal Ali, Mandela Jones, Megan Lynch, Jay Co., and Danielle Picaro, and every division and staff member of the City Council, including my Deputy Director of Scheduling and Advance, Patrick Lewis, and all council member staff. The council's work to deliver a budget that invests in New Yorkers and our communities is only possible because of your dedication and service as true public servants. I know it required long days and nights, and we really, really appreciate all of you so much. Thank you all. As a government, one of the most important responsibilities we have to the people we present in every borough and community is to deliver a city budget that reflects their needs and priorities. We know what's possible when New Yorkers can access opportunity, children are healthier, parents can advance in their careers, and our communities are safer. That's why... ...deepening our investments in affordable housing, strengthening our early childhood education system and public schools, and fighting for the institutions that support our neighbors like our libraries, parks, and older adult centers. While too much of our collective efforts in past years have been spent on restoring us, our persistence and subsequent win... I have repeatedly insisted on our need to move away from a budget of restoration to one that strengthens investments in New Yorkers. This year, we are making big strides towards that goal. Together, we secured baseline funding for three K and pre-K, as well as investments for preschool, special education. We also won new funding to expand childcare for our youngest from zero to two years old, because this is how we empower families to afford and remain in our city. And because libraries are the pillars of our communities, we are expanding seven-day library service to more neighborhoods and branches across the entire city. This year, we're also expanding eligibility for fair fares once again to reach New Yorkers with incomes up to one hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty level. This budget also reflects the council's persistent efforts to push the city towards investing in mental health and public safety solutions at a greater scale, so that we can close Rikers and connect more people to mental health care. And after years of fighting, we have finally secured baseline funding to add to a Justice Involve Supportive Housing, RFP, that had sat dormant at the Department of Health for far too long. For our older adults, we secured significant funding that was lost in previous years, as well as increased home-delivered meal rates so that our seniors do not go hungry. The budget also protects the many New Yorkers and services that have come under attack from the most harmful aspects of the Trump administration's agenda. When New Yorkers' civil rights are at risk and families are being separated, the city must step up and defend them. We are prioritizing crime victims when the federal government is abandoning them. We're doubling down on the benefits and values of cultural diversity and increasing food assistance at a time when Trump and his allies in Congress are threatening to diminish help for hard-working Americans. The successes in this year's budget are the product of multi-year efforts built upon a foundation of relentless advocacy by New Yorkers across our city. While there is more work ahead, this shows that together, we can build a city where the budget reflects all of our needs, where families can afford not just to survive, but live and flourish here. We must expand investments to ensure the success of our greatest resources, the people of New York City. This budget belongs to all of us, and I thank my colleagues and everyone who fought alongside us to win a budget that makes a more just and equitable city possible for all New Yorkers. Thank you very much. We have a few more things to celebrate, because July 4th is Independence Day, and I hope you all get a chance to spend meaningful time with your loved ones, your community, and your family for much deserved time off. We also want to wish a very happy birthday to Councilmember Rafael Salamanca, who will be celebrating on July 2nd, Councilmember Linda Lee, whose birthday is on the 3rd, and Majority Leader Amanda Farias on the 9th. Happy birthday, everybody. And finally, I want to acknowledge that we're joined today in council members by Kadim Tiam, OSB, and all of the blackmail content creators who are visiting City Hall for today's stated meeting. Welcome to all of you. Thank you for your brilliance and presence, and... And to Councilmember Kevin Christian Riley, for all that you do to uplift our young people. Thank you so much, Councilmember. Yeah, we can do that. Now, let's move on to our other items in our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following land use items. The Coney Development: Modifications to the city map that will enable a proposed entertainment complex in the Coney Island amusement district to apply for a state gaming facility license. If awarded by the state, the proposed development would include a casino, hotel, convention center, retail spaces, a food hall, event, and rooftop space, as well as a fifteen-hundred parking space, as well as a fifteen-hundred space parking lot in Councilmember Justin Brannon's district. Grace Houses will facilitate the development of a five-story mixed-use building and a seven-story residential building, creating a combined one hundred and fifty-three affordable rental units and a community facility space for the Grace Baptist Church in Councilmember Nurse's district. Halitz Point SCA Siting will facilitate the construction of a new, approximately five-hundred forty-seven to seven-hundred fifty-four-seat K through eight school in Councilmember Kabon's district. We'll also vote on the following finance items. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon would approve the expenditure of payments in lieu of taxes to fund the development of infrastructure over the Western Rail Yards in support of the development of housing. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon would approve the new designation and changes in the designation of certain organizations to receive funding in the expense budget. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon would establish a new forty-year Article 11 tax exemption for one lot in Councilmember Shawna Brayu's district. And a pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon would establish a new thirty-year extended partial Article V tax exemption for two lots in Councilmember Abreu's district. Next, we'll vote on the following resolutions. Resolution 817, sponsored by Councilmember Tiffany Kabon, would call upon the New York State Legislature to provide the necessary funds to ensure hospital and healthcare provider services for gender-affirming care remain accessible for all people in New York City. We thank our staff member Kristi Dwyer. Resolution 931, sponsored by Councilmember Sandy Nurse, would condemn the Trump administration for disappearing immigrants to prisons in other countries. Thank you to our staff members Rebecca Baria and Nicole Kata. Today, we'll also vote on the following legislation. Introduction 1296A, sponsored by Councilmember Carlina Rivera, would expand the allowable color of a sidewalk shed parapet panels to include approval or alternative artwork through the City Canvas program. This change would make city buildings eligible to utilize capital funding to participate in the program. Thank you to our staff members Austin Malone, Jose Conde, Andrew Born, and Dirk Spencer. Introduction 1281A, sponsored by Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, would postpone the natural gas alarm requirement of Local Law 157 of 2016 to no earlier than January 1st, 2027. Thank you to our staff members Francis O'Rourke, Austin Malone, Jose Conde, Andrew Born, and Dirk Spencer. Introduction 99B, sponsored by Councilmember Natasha Williams, would require the Department of Transportation to establish overnight parking areas in industrial business zones for commercial vehicles. The bill would also require DOT to conduct outreach to commercial entities in the area, as well as truck drivers operating in the city, to inform them of these new areas. Thank you to our staff members Mark Chen and Samuel Bridebart. Introduction 3A, sponsored by Councilmember Shawna Brayu, would specify that the Department of Sanitation is the agency responsible for the removal of all derelict vehicles from the street. Under state law, a vehicle is derelict if it is abandoned, does not have license plates, and has a wholesale value of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars or less. Thank you to our staff member Morgan Barrett. Introduction 857B, sponsored by Councilmember Rafael Salamanca, would require the Department of Sanitation to, within twenty-four hours of receiving a report of an abandoned vehicle, determine whether the vehicle qualifies as a derelict vehicle under state law. If DSNY cannot ascertain the vehicle identification number of any vehicle it determines to be derelict, it would be required to remove the vehicle from the street within seventy-two hours of it being reported as abandoned. Thank you to our staff members Mark Chen, Elliot Heisler, and Morgan Barrett. Introduction 643A, sponsored by Councilmember Kevin Riley, would require that information be posted on the Park Department's website on how to access the Department of Education's indoor basketball courts when the weather does not allow for the use of outdoor basketball courts. The bill would also require DPR and DOE to conduct a study on how to improve overall access to indoor basketball courts. Introduction 566B, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would require the DOE, in consultation with the Parks Department, to create an annual report on how to expand public access to school playgrounds. The plan would need to prioritize playgrounds that are located in environmental justice areas and include, for the upcoming year, a list of at least fifteen school playgrounds that could be open to the public on weekends and after-school hours. Thank you to our staff members Chris Satori and Patrick Mulvaughill. Introduction 205A, sponsored by Councilmember Shahana Hanif, would require the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection to conduct outreach about common fraudulent schemes committed by providers of immigration legal services and how to avoid them. The bill would also require DCWP to report annually on its outreach and education efforts, as well as complaints and inspections related to providers of immigration assistance services. Thank you to our staff members Rachel Cordero, Natalie Meltzer, and Sarah Swain. Introduction 980A, sponsored by Councilmember Julie One, would increase civil penalties for immigration assistance service providers that do not comply with applicable regulations. The bill would also clarify that immigration assistance service providers who advertise services must post or include with the ad a legally required notice of the services they are not authorized to provide. Thank you to our staff members Natalie Kata, Rebecca Barilla, Margaret Lyford, Robert Calandra, and Rachel Cordero. Introduction 47B, sponsored by Councilmember Shekhar Krishnan, would remove all misdemeanor criminal penalties for general vendors and mobile food vendors. Vendors who operate without a license could be subject to a violation and a fine or a civil penalty. Vendors who violate any other street vending laws would be subject to a civil penalty. And Introduction 30B, sponsored by Councilmember Oswald Felice, would establish safety requirements for powered bicycles when used by contracted delivery workers, including meeting local standards for the sale of such devices, which includes certification by an accredited testing laboratory. Responsibility for compliance with these provisions would fall on the delivery service. Thank you to our staff members Rachel Cordero, Natalie Meltzer, and Sarah Swain. Thank you very much for your attention. Now, I turn it back over to our Majority Now, I turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders, and I’d like to first recognize Majority Whip Brooks Powers, followed by Councilmembers One and then Riley.
Thank you. From the moment the fiscal year 2026 preliminary budget was released, we knew this would be another challenging year, with rising costs, ongoing fiscal pressure, and deep uncertainty around federal support. But being fiscally responsible doesn’t mean walking away from New Yorkers. It means protecting the essential services they depend on. This year’s budget delivers meaningful progress for working families across New York City. I’m especially proud we secured $25 million to expand the Fairfares Program, raising eligibility to 150% of the federal poverty level, a critical step that will make public transit more affordable and accessible for thousands of struggling New Yorkers. As a mother, I know firsthand how vital affordable childcare is to families. That’s why I’m proud this budget includes $25 million to expand full-day, full-year early childhood education and extended day programs, investments that working parents desperately need. We also secured $1 billion in housing capital to build and preserve affordable homes with expanded pathways to homeownership and preservation programs that are especially important in Southeast Queens, and we’ve invested $2 billion in infrastructure, including long-overdue upgrades to sewers, stormwater systems, and public spaces. In my district, I’m proud this budget includes $300,000 to move forward the Far Rockaway Trauma Center, a life-saving facility our community has long fought for. I thank all of my colleagues and the administration for their support in this endeavor, and I’m encouraged by the inclusion of a new initiative to combat gender-based violence, a meaningful investment in safety, dignity, and justice for survivors across our city. While this budget reflects progress, we know the work must continue, including urgent repairs to critical infrastructure such as our roads, health facilities, and firehouses. Finally, I’m disclosing...
Do you want me to disclose now?
Finally, I’m disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the Queens Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is funded in the budget we are adopting, and I am associated with that organization, and that the YMCA is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my family and I are associated with that entity. And the New York City Department of Education, Edge School of the Arts, and Community Youth Care Services Incorporated are funded in the budget we are adopting, and my child is associated with those entities. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Majority Whip. Just want to give a flag for members that you can refrain from using your... from naming your disclosures until you vote, just so you can save yourself some time. I’ll now recognize Councilmember Kevin Riley, followed by Brewer, then Feliz. My apologies, Councilmember One first, and then Councilmember Riley. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, we’re voting on my bill, Intro 980A, which increases existing penalties to deter bad actors from misleading immigrants who are seeking a pathway to citizenship in the United States. These violations include notarios who are unauthorized to practice law, or who threaten to report their customers to Immigration Customs Enforcement. These violations will double penalties from existing ranges of $3,750 to $5,000, to $7,500 to $10,000 for the first violation, and successive violations from the existing $9,000 to $10,000 to $18,000, $20,000, so double the penalties. I propose this law in direct response to several constituents who visited my office, as they were victims of predatory immigration service providers who were scammed out of thousands of dollars. In Intro 980A, we will crack down on unlicensed scammers, preying on the vulnerable and increased transparency for all clients, greatly enhancing the security of our immigrant communities. And with this bill, I will ensure that immigrants are given the help that they were promised during these alarming times. So I urge all of my colleagues to vote in support of 980A, so that we can continue to make sure that our new migrant neighbors have a clear pathway to citizenship. Thank you so much.
Recognizing Councilmember Riley, followed by Brewer, then Feliz.
Thank you, Majority Leader. The Indoor Hoops Act was inspired directly by the voices of our youth and community basketball leagues, who told me loud and clear that when the weather is bad, they’re forced to sit the game out, with nowhere safe to play or stay engaged. In neighborhoods like mine in the Bronx and across our city, basketball is more than just a game. It’s mentorship, it’s safety, it’s structure, and too many communities have faced real barriers to indoor recreational access. This bill requires NYC Parks to make information about indoor courts public and accessible. It also directs a study on how to improve access from simplifying the permit process to expanding public school usage when schools are closed, partnering with the DOE. I want to thank my colleagues who co-sponsored this legislation. With your support, we are listening to our communities and responding with action. I ask my colleagues to vote for the Indoor Hoops Act for the future of our young people. It’s vital that no matter the weather, no matter the neighborhood, this council in our city is committed to opening doors, creating safe spaces, and investing in their growth. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Recognizing Councilmember Brewer, followed by Feliz, then Abreu.
Thank you very much. I’m calling... speaking about 566B, which is a law that would mandate that there be more schoolyards open to the public. We all know that children need outdoor recreation. It’s good for their mental, physical, and social well-being. In New York City, there are 945 school buildings with an outdoor yard. 288 of them, or about 30%, are open to the public outside of school hours, and that would include Trust for the Public Land and those that are jointly operated by DOE and Parks, and they are packed with families all the time when they’re open. My bill would grow that number by at least 15 schoolyards per year, prioritizing low-income communities with the least access to outdoor open space. This particular bill is supported by a lot of organizations, and they include the New York League of Conservation Voters, Randall’s Island Park Alliance, Riverside Park Conservancy, Open Plans, Trust for Public Land, Wellness in the Schools, New York City H2O RPA, Transportation Alternatives, and New York Restoration Project, New Yorkers for Parks, Local Nature Hub, the IBO, and thanks Beta NYC for the map. And I hope we will pass... There are 25 co-sponsors of this law. Thank you very much.
Recognizing Councilmember Feliz, followed by Abreu, then Krishnan.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I’m proud and honored to have legislation before us, the first in the country, which will require that delivery companies provide safe e-bikes to their workers, so that we can finally resolve the fire safety crisis posed by defective e-bikes. The threats posed by unsafe e-bikes continue to grow. This year, we’ve already had 116 fires through the end of June. This is actually the most amount of fires that we’ve ever had due to e-bikes. The threats related to e-bikes, defective e-bikes, continue to grow, and have shown time and time again that this is an issue that will not resolve itself on its own. Last week, for example, in the Bronx, we had another five-alarm fire in the Bronx that injured 15 people, including a firefighter, a threat that continues to grow. Since day one, as we all know, we’ve given this issue unequivocal attention. We passed legislation, and we have made some progress. Compared to last year and the year before, we’ve seen less deaths, less injuries. Less deaths, less injuries, but the amount of fires is still high, much higher than any other year, which shows that the problem has not been fully resolved. We’re in a fire safety crisis, and we need to make sure that delivery workers who work hard have access to safe equipment, so that while supporting our city and their families, they’re not going to have to put their lives at risk. These fires are dangerous, they’re destructive, they escalate fast, and they’re difficult to extinguish, and we’ve had too many of these fires. This is a crisis that can and must be concluded, and everyone must help resolve the crisis, including and especially the delivery companies who have their biggest market right here in the city of New York. By requiring that the safe e-bikes be provided by the companies, we’re going to make sure that only the safe e-bikes be used. Workers will no longer have to risk their lives while working hard to support our city and to make a living. So I just want to thank everyone who helped make this possible, including and especially Speaker Adams and your entire team. Thank you so much. We’ve had 116 fires this year already, the most ever, and we’re going to continue to give this issue attention until we get that number to zero. Thank you so much. Vote yes, everybody.
Recognizing Councilmember Abreu, followed by Krishnan, then Salamanca.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. I’m proud to vote in support of the fiscal year 2026 budget. Budgets are moral documents, and this one makes clear: We’re choosing to invest in the people of New York City. We secured key investments that reflect the day-to-day realities of working-class neighborhoods like mine: Funding for supplemental cleaning organizations like ACE and CEO that keep our streets livable and dignified; Support for community composting and public education as we move forward towards a more sustainable and more just city; And we protected and expanded the core services our communities rely on every day: Libraries, after-school programs, and childcare. These aren’t luxuries, they’re lifelines. I’ve heard from families across my district that the lack of after-school options and limited access to childcare have forced them to make impossible decisions. This budget begins to change that, with historic funding for after-school and a pilot for universal childcare that reflects what our families need and deserve. We also secured funding for immigrant legal services, because in communities like ours, where immigrants are deeply woven into the fabric of our daily life, this is personal. And of course, none of this would have been possible without the leadership of our Speaker Adrian Adams. On this final budget of her speakership, I want to offer my heartfelt thanks for her steadfast commitment to equity, not just in words, but in action. When a 100-year-old pool in my district had been languishing for decades, despite a vibrant school community and a neighboring NYCHA development that had long relied on it, Speaker Adams made it a priority. She understood that access to swimming isn’t a luxury, it’s safety, it’s equity, and especially in communities like mine, where those opportunities have too often been denied. She didn’t just talk, she showed up and got it done. Her leadership made a difference, and our communities are better off because of it. Thank you so much. I encourage my colleagues to vote aye.
Recognizing Councilmember Krishnan, followed by Salamanca, then Williams.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader. On a day when Senate Republicans are passing a horrific budget bill that adds 10,000 ICE officers to the federal government, further criminalizing immigrants across America, we in New York City are protecting our immigrant communities. That’s why I’m proud that we are passing historic legislation today with Intro 47B, which will decriminalize street vending in the city. Street vendors are our city’s smallest businesses. They provide us coffee on our way to work, tacos during a quick lunch break, and ice cream on a hot summer day. However, because of a broken vending system, street vendors could face jail time for simply trying to support their families. No vendor, no person should face jail time and criminal charges for simply trying to feed and support their family and pay for childcare. With the federal government’s horrific immigration policies, the consequences of vending violations have become even more stark for a workforce of street vendors that is 96% immigrant, and it is clear the disastrous immigration consequences that criminal charges can have as well. It is more important than ever that we protect our immigrant communities, most affected by the criminalizing of street vending across our city. Intro 47B is a common-sense measure that was agreed upon by a diverse set of stakeholders, including enforcement agencies, street vendors, and business advocates. The bill supports a clear, fair, and regulated vending system that is organized and enforceable. It removes criminal liability for vendors, ensuring that our city’s smallest business owners do not face criminal charges or jail time simply for trying to earn money to support their families. The passing of Intro 47 represents just the first step in many that the city council is actively considering to create a clear, fair, comprehensive, well-regulated, and enforceable vending system that our city definitely needs, especially in this moment. I want to again thank Speaker Adams, my colleagues who are champions of the Street Vendor Reform Package, Councilmember Sanchez, De La Rosa, Majority Leader Farias, and public advocate Williams. My other colleagues have signed on in support, and I want to give a special shout-out to the team at the Street Vendor Project for their tireless advocacy to reform our city’s broken vending system, as well as to our committee staff, Sarah Swain, and my legislative staff, Greg Clark. Thank you, and urge my colleagues to vote aye.
Recognizing Councilmember Salamanca, followed by Williams, then Dinowitz.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, we’re voting on Intro 857B. It requires the Department of Sanitation to tow vehicles that are identified and encumbrance on our city streets within 24 to 72 hours of notification by city agencies, community boards, elected officials, or 3-1-1 claims. This legislation is not just about tidying up our curbs, it’s about reclaiming public space and ensuring safety and restoring fairness to how our streets are used. Every day, abandoned and inoperable vehicles clog our neighborhoods. They block bike lanes, bus stops, fire hydrants, and curb spaces desperately needed for everything, from commercial deliveries to parking for residents. These abandoned vehicles churn our streets into graveyards for zombie cars and are a source of constant frustration for all of our constituents. This legislation sets a clear, reasonable timeframe for action. It empowers the Department of Sanitation to act swiftly but fairly. It brings much-needed accountability to a system too often that lets inaction persist. Clean, safe, and accessible streets are not a luxury, they’re a basic necessity in a city of over 8 million people. Let’s not allow the bad actors who abandon vehicles to hold entire blocks hostages. I would like to thank my colleagues, who have already signed on as co-sponsors, for this common-sense legislation. With Intro 857B, we are putting our public space back to public use.
Recognizing Councilmember Williams, followed by Dinowitz.
Thank you. I celebrate the budget we passed today, but for three years under this mayor, we have had to fight for restorations instead of more investments. Something has to change. We need real reform that rebalances power and gives the council the tools to do its job and to protect our communities from political gains. There is still much more important work ahead: Supporting the Commission on Human Rights, the Commission on Racial Equity, and standing with working-class homeowners. While the budget provides essential funding to city agencies, legislation like Intro 99 ensures those resources are used effectively by establishing clear guidelines and requiring community engagement around commercial truck parking. For years, our residents have raised concerns about trucks parked overnight on residential blocks, blocking sidewalks, narrowing streets, and creating safety hazards, especially for children and seniors. This isn’t just a Southeast Queens problem, it impacts neighborhoods across the city. Speaker Adams and Majority Whip Silvina Brooks-Powers, who also represent parts of Southeast Queens, have heard these concerns firsthand. That’s why a few months ago, I stood with Majority Whip Brooks-Powers, local leaders, and community members at the IBZ Truck Parking Rally, calling for safer, fairer, and more effective overnight trucking... truck parking policies, especially since Southeast Queens was excluded from the city’s initial pilot despite being heavily affected. Intro 99B creates designated overnight truck parking areas in industrial business zones and requires the Department of Transportation to engage community boards, council members, businesses, and truck drivers. Passing budgets and advancing legislation like Intro 99 are important steps towards a more accountable and responsive city government. I want to thank the Truck Association, Mark from the Legislative Division, and of course, Speaker Adrian Adams for her leadership and partnership in passing this bill and the budget. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Dinowitz.
Good timing, Sheik. Good. Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Today, the council will be voting on my bill, Introduction 1281A, which amends Local Law 157 of 2016. This local law required that natural gas detectors be in residential buildings, a law passed in response to deadly gas explosions in 2015, including one at JFK High School Campus, which is where I actually worked. Local Law 157 is an important law, requiring gas detectors that are vital for public safety, but right now, the law’s mandate is impossible to meet. The reality is that devices required by the bill are not available, even for New Yorkers who ordered these devices months ago. Faulty devices, coupled with supply chain issues, has ensured that most cannot meet the standards set by Local Law 157. This includes those who managed to order the device while it was available but have had their orders delayed. New Yorkers will be unfairly fined for something that is out of their control. Introduction 1281 would postpone the natural gas alarm requirement and would instead provide that natural gas alarms be required no earlier than January 1st, 2027. DOB would also be required to submit to the mayor and the council by July 1st, 2026, a determination on if the department has been able to identify four distinct manufacturers of battery-powered natural gas alarms. If such determination finds an insufficient number of alarms, DOB could extend the compliance date to January 1st, 2029. As it has now been almost two months since the compliance deadline, it is urgent that we pass the bill today, so New Yorkers will not be punished for failing to meet impossible requirements. This law ensures we uphold critical safety standards without unfairly burdening New Yorkers. I want to thank Speaker Adams, Chair Sanchez, and my staff, including Amstar Poli, and Councilmembers Botcher and Holden for their partnership on this, and I urge all of my colleagues to sign on and vote aye. Thank you.
Seeing no one else signed up to speak... Report of special committees?
None.
Reports of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, Intro 30B, Safe Delivery Devices.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 47B, General and Food Vendors.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 205A, Immigration Services.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, Pre-Considered Reso 959, Organization Funding.
coupled on general orders.
Intro 960... excuse me, Reso 960, Western Rail Yards.
coupled on general orders.
Pre-Considered Resos 961 and 962. Preconsidered Resos 961 and 962, Base Proportion and Base Percentage.
coupled on general orders.
Preconsidered M149 and Preconsidered Reso 971, and Preconsidered M150 and Preconsidered Reso 972, Budget Modifications.
coupled on general orders.
M128 and Preconsidered Resos 973 and 974, Expense, Revenue, Contract Budget, Fiscal Year 2026.
coupled on general orders.
M129 and Preconsidered Resos 975 and 976, Executive Capital Budget, Fiscal Year 2026.
coupled on general orders.
M147 and Preconsidered Reso 977, Community Development Program.
coupled on general orders.
M154 and Preconsidered Reso 978, Tax Fixing Resolution.
coupled on general orders.
Preconsidered LU 318 and Reso 979, and Preconsidered LU 319 and Reso 980, Tax Exemptions.
coupled on general orders.
M91 through M133, Various Budget Documents.
coupled to be filed.
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, Intros 1281A and 1296A, Building Code and Construction Sites.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Immigration, Intro 980A, Immigration Assistance Services.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU 294 to 296, 145 for Harlem.
approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197 of the New York City Charter.
LU 297 and Reso 981, Naconi Development.
coupled on general orders.
LU 298 to 316, Various Applications.
approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197 of the New York City Charter.
LU 320 and Reso 982, School Facility.
coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Parks and Recreation, Intros 566B and 643A, Playgrounds and Basketball Courts.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Sanitation and Solid Waste Management, Intro 3A, Derelict Vehicles.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, Intros 99B and 857B, Truck Parking and Abandoned Vehicles.
amended and coupled on general orders.
On the General Orders Calendar, LU 287 and Reso 983, and LU 288 and Reso 984, Grace Houses.
coupled on general orders.
Resolution Appointing Various Persons, Commissioner of Deeds.
coupled on general orders, I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's General Orders Calendar.
Brooks-Powers.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Abreu.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
I am disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that, one, AHRC is funded in the budget that we are adopting, and my partner is associated with that organization; and that, two, Health and Hospitals in the New York City Parks Department, Department of Parks and Recreation are funded in the budget that we are adopting, and my sons are associated with these organizations. And I vote aye.
Thank you. Banks.
Aye.
Botcher.
Aye.
Brennan.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I just want to take a second to thank the Council Finance Division for all their hard work over the past four years. When fighting, when you're fighting with the mayor, time flies. We appreciate all your hard work. I want to shout out our Finance Director, Richard Lee, our Managing Director, Jonathan Deputy Directors, Emra Adev, Chima Obachar, Paul Simone, Isha Wright, Assistant Director, Liz Hoffman, our Chief Economist, Assistant Director, Dalaru Demnaku, Supervising Economist, Paul Sturm, William Shermatang, Andrew Wilbur, the unit heads, Aliyah Ali, Julia Haramis, Florentine Kubor, Jimmy Reyes, Jack Story, Finance Council, Nicholas Connell, and especially a big thank you to the CFO, the Deputy Chief of Staff to the Speaker, Tanisha Edwards, for your leadership, and thank you all very much. Thank you. I vote aye.
Thank you. For disclosures, Councilmember Aviles.
Thank you, and actually, can I, permission to explain my vote? I was clearly in another place. So, I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the New York City Departments of Education, Youth, and Community Development are funded in this budget and we are adopting, and my child is associated with these entities, and the New York City Parks Department is funded in the budget and that we are adopting, and my sibling is associated with that entity. And permission to explain my vote, Majority Leader?
You can, you can explain your vote.
Thank you, thank you so much. Apologies. First, I just want to express my gratitude to the Speaker, the budget negotiating team, and all of my colleagues who worked on this budget. While the federal government attacks cities like ours who are actively resisting their fascist and racist agenda, we will always be a proud immigrant city. We believe it is not only our moral obligation as leaders, but in our interest to uphold the rights, safety, and dignity of all working-class New Yorkers, but particularly our immigrant neighbors. I'm proud of the wins we have landed, especially for our immigrant communities. Particularly, this body has secured an additional $33.6 million for immigration legal services, $24.6 for the New York Family Unity Project, and $16.5 million to support unaccompanied minors. Though the Adams Administration continues to fail to recognize the crisis of violence and mass deportation before us, this council has stepped up and demanded more, and I express my profound gratitude to Faiza Ali and Megan Lynch. The Progressive Caucus has championed and won historic public safety programs, including tens of millions of dollars for mental health response teams, strengthened the supports of survivors of gender and domestic violence, and Mental Health Pilot Program for EMS workers. So much needs to be done for the EMS workers to get pay parity. These will bring us closer to one, closer, one step closer to true public safety, where we can care for our fellow New Yorkers first, addressing head-on the public safety concerns we face, rather than just plastering another Band-Aid over them. We are bringing to fruition gains that will help to make New York City more livable, affordable for working-class New Yorkers. So first, so this is the first time I will be voting yes on this budget, because we have finally surpassed the bare minimum, not just restoring Eric Adams' cruel and unnecessary budget cuts once again. We made gains, and while the document before us is not perfect, it is clear we must engage in structural reform to make our processes more transparent, democratic, and equitable. I vote aye on all except for LU 297 and accompanying Resolution 981, for which I vote no. Thank you.
And while they're tallying, that friendly reminder to folks to please give your disclosures before your vote.
I vote aye on all, and I, oh. I'm disclosing for the record, for this council proceeding, that Columbia Presbyterian Hospital is funded in this budget, and then, and we, we are adopting my child is associated with this entity, and I vote aye on all. And I want to send a special thank you to all of the OGs who are termed out and leaving council. Thank you for making, teaching us how to get this budget done in the right way, and we really appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Banks.
Madam Majority Leader, I'm disclosing on the record from the council proceedings that Departments of Parks and Recreation and Juvenile Justice are funded in the budget we are adopting, and my brothers are associated with these entities. Thank you.
And your vote, Councilmember? Your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Brewer.
I too am disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the City University of New York is funded in the budget we are adopting, and I am associated with that entity. I too want to thank the folks from the finance staff, you mentioned certainly Richard Lee and Jonathan Rosenberg, I want to add Vanessa Diaz Lopez, and I want to say, and also Faiza Ali. I want to thank particularly for food, for the pantries, the cultural, the clubhouses, the libraries, and much more. We still have to work on oversight. OMB doesn't seem to want to have too much oversight of the administration. We're not able to get funding for more of that, that's a challenge. In my office, I want to thank Cynthia Hornig, and certainly the Van Fellow, Miller Schulman, who's spent a great deal of time on the budget, and just in terms of 566B, the schoolyards, thanking Cynthia Shulapooter, and the amazing staff on the Parks Department, Parks Committee, Chris Satori, Patrick Moonhill, Michael Sherman, and Ann Driscoll. And I also want to just mention that in terms of the amazing challenge that we have for federal budget cuts, as we heard earlier from Chair Brennan and from the Speaker, hopefully the Rainy Day Fund, and that kind of funding will help us prevent any major impact on New York City. However, the fact that the federal government is able to make these cuts is atrocious, and we have to fight them every bit of the way. Thank you very much.
And your vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you, Councilmember. Caban.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. Thank you to Speaker Adams, Finance Chair Brennan, the entire finance team, and my colleagues for your work on this budget. Today, I am voting yes. I am proud, proud of the council's fight against this mayor's unnecessary cuts, clawing back what we could in order to stop the bleeding and protect New Yorkers. The truth is sobering. This budget, like those before it, overinvests in punishment and policing, stars public defenders of resources they need, while under-investing in life-affirming institutions that create true public safety. It is the culmination of four years of bad faith, undemocratic negotiations with a corrupt mayor who is beholden to corporate interests and blackmailed by Donald Trump. But, it also marks the beginning of a new era. New Yorkers are clearly demanding a new kind of politics, a politics that chooses affordability for working people over the interests of the rich. Today's budget sets us up to deliver for New Yorkers under a new administration that shares our values and commitments come January. And it contains urgent, critical protections for our immigrant and trans neighbors that the mayor refused, but the council demanded and secured, including historic funding for trans and gender nonconforming New Yorkers, huge thanks to the New York City Trans and Queer Provider Advocacy Coalition, crisis-to-care investments that move us toward public safety rooted in care, not punishment. Thank you especially to Progressive Caucus Director Emmett Turan and Councilmember Nurse. The $5 million investment needed for the Rady Boys and Girls Club of Astoria, a major step towards enriching the lives of young people in my district. A hard-fought $50 million to increase immigration legal services secured by the council, including my colleague, Councilmember Aviles, and advocates at NYIC and others after the mayor proposed a devastating cut, and childcare expansions, including a pilot program for children under age 2, a game changer for working families, thanks especially to Councilmember Gutierrez. This budget is the floor, not the ceiling. With caution, with reservations, and a deep commitment to build on this momentum to deliver for New Yorkers, I vote aye on all, with the exception of LU 297 and the accompanying resolution on which I abstain.
Thank you. Carr.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I just want to say thank you so much to the Speaker for her support of the initiatives and programming that are so important to the neighborhoods and boroughs that I represent, as well as my colleagues on the budget negotiating team, ably led by our Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala and our Finance Chair, Justin Brennan, and of course, the great team of staffers we have here, Jeremy John, Faiza Ali, Tanisha Edwards, Richard Lee, and everyone in the Finance Division who work so hard to make budget adoption possible, as well as our friends in the Office of the General Counsel. And of course, I have to end with thanking my own team members, in particular, my Budget Director, Loren Centeneo, and my Chief of Staff, Giuseppe Di Zario. And so with that said, I'd like to disclose on the record of the council proceedings that the Italian Club of Staten Island, the Jewish Community Center of Staten Island, and the Garibaldi Meucci Museum are funded in the budget we are adopting, and I am associated with those organizations. And I'll be voting no on preconsidered resolutions 961, 962, 978, and M154, and aye on the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. De La Rosa.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. I would like to first thank Speaker Adams, her leadership team, BNT, the Finance Division, and all of the staff here for their leadership and dedication in producing a budget for working people. I would also like to thank my colleagues, especially those members of the Progressive Caucus and the Women's Caucus, and the various other coalitions that helped push for our Crisis-to-Care Budget Campaign, which secured $80 million for critical mental health services and supportive housing programs, as well as six, over $6 million to support new parents, promote gender equity, and provide domestic violence survivor support, as well as $50 million for immigrant legal services. Time and time again, this council faced a largely restorative budget. It was because of our grit, that the commitment to clawback austerity measures that we have seen seven-day library services, a service most New Yorkers wouldn't even understand as a program to cut, and managed to expand investment in critical areas. New Yorkers made their voices loud and clear, and continue to do so. We are, we need an affordable city. Affordability looks like universal childcare for working families driven out of our city by cost burden. Affordability looks like billions invested in preserving and developing truly affordable housing through City for All. Affordability looks like food access, equitable transportation, investments in CUNY and public schools, maternal health and mental health, and prioritizing immigrant services that protect vulnerable communities that make up the fabric of our city. While there are still gaps, the council will continue to fight to address these gaps, and this $115.9 billion is a response to New Yorkers, that we hear you, we see you, and we are fighting to make our city a more affordable and safe place for all. I'd like to take a point of privilege to also thank my Deputy Chief of Staff, Kiana Diaz, who welcomed her first child into the world yesterday. So, we got a budget. So, we got a budget and a baby in District 10, and we are so excited. I am also disclosing for the record of the council proceedings that the City of, the City, the New York City Department of Education, the Washington Heights Tennis Association, and BMESO USA are funded in this budget that we are adopting today, and my child is associated with these entities, and that the Fortune Society is funded in this budget we are adopting today, and my partner is associated with this entity. I vote aye on. Thank you.
Thank you. Dinowitz.
That's fantastic. I only got a budget, no baby. Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted, and if you have any disclosures, please state them first.
I have no disclosures. I have nothing. Are you surprised I got nothing? I just, I want to take a moment to thank Speaker Adams and the whole team, Richard, Jeremy, Faiza, Florentine, for really, I think, fighting hard for, you know, not just our values, but I think, you know, a budget that makes sense. And if you compare our budget to whatever the heck they're doing in Washington, where they're cutting everything for the people who need it the most, you don't cut your way to prosperity, you invest. You make investments to protect people, to keep them safe, and to improve our economy. And even the investments we're making in CUNY, every study shows CUNY's, you know, one of the best investments you can make, between $3 and $4, back to taxpayers for every dollar invested. Between $7 and $12, back to the students for every dollar we as taxpayers invest in CUNY. And part of those savings comes from students graduating, earning more money, and not needing to be on public assistance programs like Medicaid and food assistance, the very programs our federal government is trying to cut. You don't save money in our federal government by cutting the programs, you save money by making good investments, and that's what this budget does. It does all that while still protecting vulnerable communities like our immigrants who are under attack again because of our federal government. So despite how hard they try to, you know, make us less safe and make us poorer, we are making the right decision by investing in those who need the most help and by making smart fiscal decisions. With that, I vote aye on all.
Felder.
I vote. I vote no on 47B, Reso 961, 962, 978, M154. I wanted to disclose that I have an association with Tuero College, and that's funded in this budget. In addition, my spouse is associated with Bena, Stroke and Brain Injury, and a sibling is associated with Yella de Yelda that is funded in this budget, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Feliz.
I would like to disclose on the record that I currently serve as an adjunct professor in the CUNY system, specifically at Holtsos Community College in the Bronx. And briefly, permission to explain my vote? Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I just want to congratulate everyone on a good budget. We fully funded everything we possibly could, including education, immigration, sanitation, including the new containerization rules. We fully funded our public safety systems, including our police department, so just want to congratulate everyone. I vote aye on all.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Thank you. Gutierrez.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. I am disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the New York City Department of Social Services is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my spouse is associated with that entity. The New York City Department of Education is funded in the budget that we're adopting, and my child is associated with that entity, and that Mama Nadid's Medical Center is funded in the budget we're adopting, and my sibling is associated with that entity. Whew, okay. And before I forget, I vote aye on all items, except for LU Item 291 with accompanying Reso 981. Okay, thank you. For the last four years, the mayor has proposed cruel and cynical cuts to CUNY, to childcare, to parks, to mental health. Then after months of public pressure, he reverses course and throws himself a whole parade. But this council has remained steady and worked to restore funds so that we can keep the city running and services reliable. And this year is no different. Budget wins this year belong to this council, to the advocates, to the people who fought back. We baseline 3K, mental health programs, secured new funding for serine services, legal aid, and support for survivors. We are investing in childcare for two-year-olds, additional funds for legally mandated preschool special education, and we demanded immigration legal support, programs that if scaled could really transform our city. A special, special thank you to Speaker Adams, who invested in the neighborhoods of Bushwick, Ridgewood, and Williamsburg by supporting funding for affordable housing for seniors, supporting repairs for affordable housing units, capital for our local schools, and for upgrades to our health facilities, as well as funding AI education directly to our communities. On behalf of District 34, thank you, gracias, for your vision, your quest for justice, and for your steadfast commitment to equity for our city. Next year, we'll fight for what this mayor won't: truly universal childcare, affordable housing dollars this admin left on the table, and the legal tools to take on big real estate. This budget has some real victories, and I applaud Speaker Adams, Finance Chair Justin Brennan, my colleagues, the Progressive Caucus. Shout out to Chairs Nurse Hanif and De La Rosa, and our Director Emmett. And a huge thank you to the whole finance team and the Speaker's leadership team that have been going to bat for our neighborhoods time and time again. We are ready to govern like the future depends on it, because it does. Thank you. I'm just, I'm so sorry. It's, I'm voting, I'm abstaining from LU 297 with accompanying Reso 981, to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. Hanif.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I'm disclosing, oops, sorry. I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the United Way of New York City and Arab American Family Support Center are funded in the budget we are adopting, and my spouse is associated with those entities. This budget is a direct rejection of Mayor Adams's austerity agenda and a victory for working-class New Yorkers. I am proud of this council for standing united and fighting back. I am so proud of the Progressive Caucus, big shout out to our Director Emmett, and our leadership council members Nurse Gutierrez, and of course, De La Rosa. As Co-Chair of the Progressive Caucus, I'm thrilled that our Crisis-to-Care campaign secured over $32 million for public safety solutions rooted in care, including mental health, peer specialists, and home plus services for survivors of domestic violence. Families have made it clear, universal childcare is essential to keeping this city livable. The budget takes meaningful steps with the $10 million pilot for children under two, and by continuing to fund Promise NYC for undocumented families. At a time when the Trump administration is ramping up attacks on immigrant and trans communities, this council responded with over $50 million for immigration legal services, $16 million for programs supporting trans New Yorkers, and increased funding for food access through the Community Food Connection Program. With that said, it's not perfect. Housing preservation and development remains under-resourced. To address the affordable housing crisis, our parks deserve greater investment, and we must do more for students, workers, and renters. We also need long overdue reforms to this budget process. This mayor has made a habit of forcing the council to negotiate from a place of scarcity. That's not good governance, it's harm. Thanks to the leadership of our Speaker and the budget negotiating team, we've made critical gains. I'm deeply grateful to the everyday New Yorkers whose advocacy helped deliver a better, more equitable budget for us all. And with new leadership ahead, I'm confident we are on our way to the safer, more just, more affordable city New Yorkers deserve. I vote aye on all, with the exception of LU 297 and the accompanying Reso 981, which, for which I vote no.
Thank you. Hanks.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Firstly, I want to thank Speaker Adrienne Adams, the finance staff, Chair Brennan, Richard Lee, Tanisha Edwards, Fazia Ali, Jeremy John. And finally, I want a special shout out to our delegation chair, Councilmember David Carr, for fighting for our small but mighty borough on the BNT. I vote aye on all, with the exception of pre-considered M154 and pre-considered resolutions 961, 962, and 978. Thank you.
Thank you. Holden.
Aye on all, except for Intro 47B, LU 297, and Reso 981, and Resos 961, 962, 978, and M154, which I vote no.
Thank you.
Councilmember, your disclosures. Can you state your disclosures, Councilmember Holden?
Well, my son works, is an adjunct lecturer at CUNY, and my other son works as HR for New York Presbyterian Hospital.
Thank you.
Disclosed on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Hudson.
I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the Brooklyn Museum, Brooklyn Botanic Garden, and Brooklyn Academy of Music are funded in the budget we're adopting, and I'm associated with those entities, and that the Museum of the City of New York is funded in the budget we're adopting, and my spouse is associated with that entity, and that UnLocal Incorporated is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my tenant is associated with that entity. Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you so much. Our city budget must reflect our moral values and meet the current political moment. Right now, our city is under attack from an authoritarian administration hell-bent on destroying the civil liberties we hold dear, and this budget shows that New York will not stand idly by, but will fight back using every tool in our arsenal. While the President, Supreme Court, and Republican extremists tell queer and trans youth they don't matter, we secured $8.5 million for gender-affirming care and LGBTQIA+ youth support services. As our immigrant communities are targeted and citizenship questioned, we're investing nearly $75 million to defend immigrant New Yorkers. And as the Trump administration slashes all sorts of public assistance, we're investing hundreds of millions to stabilize 3K and pre-K, pilot universal childcare for kids aged two and under, fund emergency food programs, and provide direct cash assistance to some of our most vulnerable New Yorkers. This budget, not to mention the tens of millions of dollars for cultural institutions and libraries, which are some of our most democratic institutions. This budget makes clear that New York City supports everyone. As Chair of the Committee on Aging, I'm proud that we fought back against the mayor's proposed cuts and ensured our older adult centers can serve our city's nearly 1.5 million older adults. And in light of the attacks on Social Security and Medicaid, I was proud to see NYC Aging's budget nearly fully restored earlier this year. Congratulations to Chair Brennan on his last budget. This is also the final budget under Speaker Adrienne Adams, whose tireless leadership is the reason this council restored tens of millions of dollars for our city's libraries and cultural institutions. She worked hard to stabilize our early childhood education system, and she secured billions of dollars for affordable housing to meet our city's housing crisis head-on. And thank you to the indefatigable finance staff who worked tirelessly and answered calls and texts at all hours, and to the advocates who held our feet to the fire to ensure our city protects and supports our most marginalized communities. I look forward to continuing to work with my colleagues in this room and to those who will join us to secure an even stronger budget that makes New York City more affordable for everyone and funds the programs and services that advance the principles of equity and justice that guide this body. Thank you. And with that, I vote aye.
Thank you. Joseph.
I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceeding that the New York City Public Schools and Brotherhood/Sister Soul are funded in the budget we are adopting, and my child is and associated with this entity. Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. As a forever educator and advocate for our youth and working families, I'm proud to stand here today in support of a budget that puts our youngest New Yorkers first. Far too long, infant and toddler care have been overlooked, treated like an afterthought, when it should have been cornerstone of our early childhood system. Today, with a $10 million investment in early childhood education along with funding to support preschool special education, we are finally righting that wrong. We're building what was dismantled, we're restoring what our families have needed for years, and we're doing it in a way that centers equity by prioritizing the neighborhoods that have historically been left behind. This is more about, this is more than numbers in a spreadsheet. This is about giving working families, especially Black and Brown families, immigrant families, the resources and support they need to thrive. It's about meeting parents where they are and honoring the full scope of their child's development from birth through earliest years. This budget does not stop at early childhood. It delivers for our immigrant communities what we need, support for legal services, and community-based resources. It invested in affordable housing, infrastructure, it prioritized health, education, and our parks, because we know that a city, just a city, invests in a whole person and the whole community. From District 40 and the communities I represent across New York City, this budget shows that this is a city council that believes in bold progress. It's a declaration in the face of austerity and fear. We choose care, we choose equity, we choose to fight for a city where all New Yorkers, no matter where their zip code, status, or income, have the chance to succeed. This is a city where we're working to build one that is compassionate, inclusive, and rooted in opportunity for all. And today with this budget, we take a powerful step toward making the vision real. Lastly, I want to thank our Speaker, Adrienne Adams. Under your leadership, you believed in bold ideas, you listened to members of this body, you've been unwavering in your commitment to deliver for New York City youth. Thank you, thank you. It's been an honor to serve with you. And with that, I vote aye. I vote aye, but no on LU 297 with accompanying Reso 981. Thank you.
Krishnan.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I am disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the New York City Department of Education, Common Point NYC, and the YMCA are funded in the budget we are adopting, and my children are associated with those entities. This year's budget delivers big wins, not just for Jackson Heights, Elmerston, Woodside Queens, but all boroughs. From a $50 million increase in immigration legal services, securing universal childcare pilot, and permanent funding for 3K and pre-K, and funding for the first-ever Asian-American curriculum in our schools, which is historic, our families and communities are supported in this budget. Our city council, as always, has placed our parks and parks funding as a top priority, as we do every year. We've added new worker positions, but we are fighting against an administration that, while paying lip service to our parks, has not done nearly enough to support them. This administration needs to do far more. We are adding more resources to our Parks Department, but the administration still places a hiring freeze on the agency, which prevents them from filling those vacant positions. I urge this administration to finish the job for our parks workers and actually stand up for our parks. That being said, we cannot be more clear-eyed about the struggle in front of us. During a time when Donald Trump and national Republicans are failing our communities and working for the wealthiest Americans to pass tax cuts for them that are paid for by slashing funding for food assistance and healthcare, I am proud that we, together in this council with the leadership of Speaker Adams, work together to secure necessary investments for our schools, for immigrants, and for working-class New Yorkers across this city. I want to thank the Speaker's office, my colleagues, my staff, the finance staff, and all of our colleagues together for a budget we've passed today that invests in our communities at such a perilous time. I vote yes. Thank you.
Lee.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I am disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the New York City Department of Education is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my children are associated with that entity, and that New York City Health and Hospitals is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my spouse is associated with that entity. And I just wanted to say very quickly, thank you so much to Speaker Adams, our amazing finance team, because I cannot tell you, I think it's been so long since we've invested this much money into mental health services, and I'm just so proud, I'm getting a little emotional, but I'm very proud of the fact that we are putting this much investment, because these, these services will save lives. They really will. The preventative services, the 988, the JISH, the ACTs, the IMTs, smaller clubhouses, we got you, okay? We have your back. And this, this is going to really provide so many lifesaving, lifesaving services. And although it doesn't come close to the decades of disinvestment into our mental health system, it brings us just a bit closer, and I'm proud that this council is doing that, thanks to Speaker Adams, as well as Chair Justin. And I just want to say a special shout out to the finance team, Richard Lee, my brother, Korean brother from another mother. And of course, we have Chima and Florentine, we have the best staff. Valeria, you guys rock, and you are awesome, and I just want to say thank you. And with that, I vote aye on all.
Mamorato.
I am disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the New York City Board of Election is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my spouse is associated with that entity. I vote aye on all, with the exception of Intro 47B, Reso 961, Reso 962, 978, and M154. I vote no.
Marte.
I am disclosing on the record of the council proceeding that the Fortune Society is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my brother is associated with that entity, and that Comm Body Production is funded in this budget we are adopting, and my brother is associated with that entity. I vote aye on all, except LU 297 and Reso 981, which I have seen. Thank you.
Meili.
I vote no on LU 297 and Reso 981, and Intro 47B, and I vote aye on all, and I want to thank the Speaker for all that she has done, and the finance staff, and Chima, I love you. I want to thank our Ms. Edwards for doing all that she has done during this budget season, and I vote aye on all again. Thank you.
Menon.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
So I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the National September 11th Memorial and Museum is funded in the budget we are adopting, and I'm a board member of this not-for-profit. I also want to take time to thank Speaker Adams for her hard work and leadership, and the whole finance team, as well as my colleagues, who I know have fought tooth and nail to fight back against the mayor's draconian cuts. And I'm particularly proud about the investments in childcare, in education, and in vital social service programs that are helping our most vulnerable. And with that, I proudly vote aye. Thank you.
Morano.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
This is my first budget as a council member, and it's been an interesting experience. Thank you. And it's really quite something to come into the city council right in the midst of a budget process. It's something that I don't think if you've ever been, never been a council member, never worked on a budget, you can ever truly understand or explain. And that's why I really want to thank Speaker Adams and her staff, not only for the incredible patience and the incredible guidance you were kind enough to give me throughout this process, but I want to thank the Speaker for, unlike a lot of other legislative bodies around the country and around the state, not penalizing my constituents because they chose to elect a Republican. And we have a lot of new school auditoriums and a lot of new playgrounds that are going to be built because of that. So thank you to the Speaker. I also want to thank her entire staff, but especially Jeremy John, who's been a great partner during this budget process. I want to thank all of my colleagues who could not have been more welcoming, more generous with their advice, and I especially want to give a shout out to the members of the Common Sense Caucus, especially my brother and mentor, David Carr, who, if I had to hire as either a therapist, a tutor, or an advisor, would bankrupt me six times over. I have to thank my staff, especially my Budget Director Brianna Nasty, and my Chief of Staff Frank Rapacholo, and of some very, very good news for one of my constituents today, Lucy the Pig and the Ganon family. We got the news that Lucy will not be separated from her family. Thank you to Mayor Adams for keeping this family together. And someone who has no business following a pig, I have to give a special shout out and acknowledgement to someone here in the gallery today, former city councilman, former Finance Chair Dominic Emrekiya Jr., who's here, who has worked on 12 budgets and always throw the best budget parties, and thank you to everybody. With that, I vote aye on all, with the exception of Intro 47B, Resos 961, 962, 978, and M154.
Councilmember Morano, your disclosures.
I have nothing to disclose.
Thank you. Moya.
I vote aye on all.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of Intro 47.
Quiet, please, quiet, please. Councilmember Moya, my apologies, could you repeat?
It's okay. I vote aye on all, with the exception of Intro 47, where I abstain, and I have nothing to disclose.
Thank you.
I beg the Majority Leader's pardon. I am disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that Victory for the Voiceless is funded in this budget we are adopting, and my spouse is associated with that entity. My apologies to my wife, Rachel, for forgetting about that.
It's okay. Your pardon is begged, no problem.
Narcisse.
I want to disclose on the council proceeding that my partner, where for NYU, that funded in the budget, but as a doctor, not in administration. Let's, let's be clear. So, permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. This is the real beautiful city because we are very diverse and real beautiful budget. Not perfect, but we work hard together to strike a balance in our city that we love. Thank you to Madam Speaker, you have been amazing, Adrienne Adams, Diana Ayala, Jeremy Johns, FISA, Richard Lee, Tanisha Edwards, Ayesha, Chima, Florentine, the whole finance team. Thank you for listening to me when I have my complaint. Thank you to my beautiful Budget Director, Said Joseph, and all my beautiful staff. This is beautiful New York City. Today, we cast our vote on a budget that reflects our sheer commitment to the people of New York City. It shows that we prioritize the people who make the city great, our families, our students, our workers, and our seniors. We have fought hard to ensure that critical investment in affordable housing, education, healthcare, and public safety remain at the forefront of our city's future. The budget addresses the pressing needs of our communities and provides the resources necessary to build a health, healthier, and safer, and more prosperous New York City that everyone loves. I want to thank the Speaker again, the Finance Chair Brennan, and all my colleagues for their unwavering commitment to this gold and the city of New York that we love. As we move forward, we continue our work to ensure that every neighborhood in the city receives their attention and support it deserves. I proudly stand in the favor of this budget, and I look forward to seeing the positive impact this investment will have on for decades to come. Thank you again, Adrienne Adams, you have done it, and I'm so proud to work with you. Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, and I appreciate you, and I vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Nurse.
Thank you. I hope I forever am after you, Councilmember Narcisse. Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I want to first just congratulate everyone here on our final budget together, and thank Speaker Adams for your leadership over the years. It's, it's good to see that feels like all of us are, are getting there together today. But once again, it just seems like this budget is really reflecting the goodwill of the council and not from the mayor, and the hard work of council finance and all the staff here. Over the last three years, our administration has, has really failed to address the root causes of the many public safety concerns that New Yorkers have repeatedly discussed and asked us to, to address. They're very challenging and complex issues like substance use, mental health, homelessness have really remained underfunded in our city's services, and that's why this year, the Progressive Caucus really launched the Crisis to Care Budget Campaign to invest in real care. And I just want to thank Speaker Adams and many of the colleagues outside of the caucus who supported this effort. We got very, very critical wins, $53 million for intensive mobile treatment teams, 4.5 million for peer specialists, thank you to Councilmember Linda Lee for that, $3 million for life-saving syringe redemption services, thank you Deputy Speaker Ayala for that, 2.5 million for crisis respite centers, and a first-of-its-kind $1 million pilot for EMS wellness and peer support program to really support the mental health of our EMS frontline workers. In total, our efforts helped secure $34 million in new investments and $46 million in baseline funds for mental health, substance use of treatment, and support for our frontline healthcare workers. And while the, the mayor has spent the last three years causing chaos, sowing corruption, and, and really having contempt for this council holding programs hostage, I'm just really grateful that we've been able to fight back together and come together to pretty resounding consensus this year. So thank you to my Speaker, my colleagues, everyone else, thank you Majority Leader. I vote aye. I don't have any disclosures. I, I vote no on LU 297 and Reso 981.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I commend Speaker Adams, Finance Chair Brennan, and the entire finance team and BNT for their expert navigation on this budget process, protecting funding for critical programs and institutions. The council has done its best each year to negotiate a budget that works for the people of New York, but each year, we have had the same foil, the second-worst mayor of my lifetime, Mayor Eric Adams. The mayor uses a budget as a political tool to reward his friends and punish his opponents. This would be bad enough if he didn't try to punish the working families who just happened to live in his opponent's district in our city. This is a mayor who has spent four years putting politics over people. We all suffer the consequences of his self-serving style, and enough is enough. I cannot wait for next year, when the council no longer needs to play defense against a mayor's relentless assaults on hard-working New Yorkers, on vulnerable New Yorkers, on all of us. In the meantime, I vote aye on the best budget this council could get, but the, the days of us scrambling for scraps will soon be over, and our city will once again be able to dream. I vote aye on all, except for LU 297, in which I am a no.
Palladino.
I vote aye on all, except for Intro 47B, Reso 961, Reso 962, Reso 978, and M154. I vote aye on all the, everything else.
Thank you. Powers.
Thank you. I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that Mount Sinai Hospital is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my mother is associated with that entity. Just a minute to say a few words. This, for many of us, is our, our final budget, our eighth budget. I think, I don't think anybody's doing nine here, and I think this is one that we, we got right. So I want to congratulate the Speaker and her whole team, and her senior leadership for four years of sticking in the fight and making sure New Yorkers got budgets that actually reflected our values, not capitulating to another side of the administration that did not believe in libraries or cultural funding, or 3K, or many other programs, and delivering a budget this year that many of us have talked about delivering early childcare in a more expansive way, which I am certain will, will create a pathway to a much larger program here in the future. I also, our, our Finance Chair, Justin Brennan, named a whole lot of names that need to be congratulated here. He left off one, and that is our Chair of the Finance Division, Justin Brennan. I think we should give him a big round of applause as well. If, if, if nothing else, because he had us hit through a month of meetings over the last few years, but did it with such grace and did an amazing job of it. Thank you to our senior staff, thank you to our fearless leaders here in the Finance Division. I proudly vote aye on a budget I think we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Wrestler.
I'm paying attention. No, sit next to nice people. I would like to disclose on the record of this council proceeding that the Mercantile Library Association of the City of New York, better known as the Center for Fiction, and the Brooklyn Heights Association are funded in this budget, and my mom serves on the board of both organizations, and they are great organizations. I would like to vote aye on all, with the exception of LU, LU 297, for which I abstain. This budget reflects some real wins for New Yorkers, and I want to thank Speaker Adams and our Finance Chair, Justin Brennan, for going to bat for our communities again, and again, and again. And I'd like to thank their wonderful team, our wonderful team, Jeremy FISA, Mandela, Richard, Tanisha, the whole Finance Division, you all do a phenomenal job. In an election year, Mayor Adams has agreed to restore many of his most egregious cuts to early childhood education, libraries, and more. And thanks to our council leadership, we pushed for investments that reflect the values of our city and our communities. We're standing up to the Trump administration by dramatically expanding immigrant legal services, we're tackling the affordability crisis by making record affordable housing investments stemming from City for All, like to shout out our Housing Chair, Piriya Sanchez, and investing in working families by providing 60,000 additional childcare vouchers for working families, thanks to an increased investment in the state and city budget. And we're taking a bold step to invest in the future by piloting a new free childcare model for 0- to 2-year-olds. And I look forward to working with our next mayor, Zoran Mamdani, to expand this program in the very near future. As pending federal cuts loom, we know that we will, that they will be absolutely devastating for working people and vulnerable populations in our city. We're talking about a 15, 17 million Americans losing their healthcare, a $15 billion hole in the state budget as a result of the Republican reconciliation bill that's moving through the Senate now. I'm glad that this budget will force more transparency from City Hall and OMB on the impacts of federal funding cuts, and we need to continue to push for a real plan and adequate reserves to weather this pending storm. Ultimately, we can't pass a perfect budget with Eric Adams across the hall. We need a real partner at City Hall to achieve the truly affordable city that we deserve. More funding for parks, guaranteed 3K for all, but this council never stopped fighting for New Yorkers, and I'm grateful to be a part of this team, and I'd just like to thank my staff, especially Molly and Sophie, for doing a great job. Proud to vote aye, and a special thanks to our Speaker. I think there could be no better reflection on her term as leader than what sounds to me like a unanimous budget for her final one. Thank you so much.
Riley.
I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceeding that the Metropolitan College of New York, the Bronx Public Administrators Office, the New York City Department of Education, Girl Scouts of Greater New York, the YMCA, the New York City Administration for Children's Services, Mount Sinai, and Maximum Evolution are all being funded in the budget, and either myself, children, wife, sibling, and business associates are associated with those entities, and I vote aye on all.
Rivera.
Thank you. I'm disclosing, oh, permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you so much. I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that New York City Health and Hospitals is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my children are associated with that entity. I also just want to disclose that I cannot pass a budget and be as effective without my Budget Director and Chief of Staff, Katie Loeb. She's been with me since 2017, and she is smart, sincere, and a public servant that I love and respect very much. Thank you, Katie, and thank you to the finance team. It's been a wild ride. It's been the honor of a lifetime to serve in this body, to support the communities that raised me, to stand with my neighbors and colleagues in fighting for New York, where all families can build a good life for themselves. It's certainly been a challenging eight years, troubling administrations, a global pandemic that I chaired hospitals, and our census task force through economic instability, all while leading a city that is never short on opinions, but always in agreement that we are the best city in the world, and remain undefeated in how we celebrate that. I think you can see that pride in, in the budget that we're passing today. This budget puts working families first, addresses our city's most pressing challenges, and I want to thank Speaker Adams for always negotiating investments that are necessary, timely, and rooted in compassion. We secured critical investments in affordable housing, food access, immigration services, programming for our queer and trans community, and the arts and, and arts and culture that define who we are as New Yorkers. I'm very proud as the Chair of the Committee on Cultural Affairs and Libraries. These are places that open doors for every generation, just like they did for me, growing up on the Lower East Side, and now for my own children. And this budget also protects vital services for youth and seniors, strengthens public schools and parks, expands early childhood education and universal childcare for 0- to 2-year-olds at that, and really against the harmful cuts that threaten the well-being of our communities. I'm proud to vote yes on this budget, my eighth, Katie's eighth budget. Proud of everything we have accomplished together. I want to thank all of the staff, our exemplary Speaker, and of course, my colleagues. I think our work has been defined by our commitment to build a New York City that leaves no one behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Salam.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the YMCA is funded in the budget we are adopting, and that I and my, my immediate family are associated with that entity, and that Youth Represent is funded in the budget, and we are, we are adopting, and my child is associated with that entity. I want to thank you so much, Madam Majority Leader, and I want to thank you so much, Madam Speaker, Adrienne Adams, for your guidance and your leadership. This was my first time completing my first administration, and it's really, really been an honor to be here in the room with you. I want to thank you, Councilman Justin Brennan, Jeremy John, FISA Ali, and everyone in the Finance Division for your attention in working so hard to deliver a robust budget that brings much-needed funding to our great city. New Yorkers are feeling the immense pressure of the rising cost of living in this city at a time when so many are facing homelessness, struggling with affordability, embracing for a potential federal budget cut out of DC. It is critical that we, as a city, step up and help ease that burden. I'm honored to stand with the city government that is funding food programs, launching a free child program, free childcare program, and putting programs in place that provide legal services and support for our most vulnerable, including immigrants, older adults, and children as part of our $116 billion budget. Thank you for going above, and thank you for going beyond. On that, I vote aye on all.
Salamanca.
I'm disclosing on the record of the council's proceeding that the YMCA is funded in the budget we are adopting, and I, along with my immediate family, are associated with this entity. The Castle Hill Little League is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my child is associated with that entity, and the New York City Parks and Recreation is funded in the budget, and we are adopting, and my spouse is associated with that entity. I would like to tell the Finance Division, job well done, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Sanchez.
I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that CUNY is funded in the budget that we are adopting, and my sibling is associated with that entity. Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Majority Leader. First, Speaker Adams and colleagues, thank you for securing critical services in this budget. For three years, this council has fought to restore what should have never been cut, funding for CUNY, childcare, education, libraries. I'm proud of the wins we secured this year, $75 million in legal assistance for immigrants, $60 million in crisis-to-care investments for mental health, substance use, and treatment, and public safety that is rooted in community. And speaking as a mom, a mom of a 0- to 2-year-old, six-month-old, $10 million for the childcare pilot brings us closer to universal childcare than ever in this city. Very proud. We also have $4 billion, billion with a B, in City for All investments reflected in this budget. The other billion came from the state. And there is new funding for supportive housing, but let's be clear, the budget process as a whole is broken, and we need reform that empowers the council to protect New Yorkers more and not just play defense. Second, I want to congratulate Councilmember Krishnan. By eliminating misdemeanor criminal penalties for vending, Intro 47 allows vendors to continue providing for their families without fear. But there is more work to be done, particularly for unlicensed vendors. This is why it is critical to pass the full street vending reform package, Intro 431, 24, 408, 1251. This can still be the council that reforms the vending system, one to one that is fair and effective, where vendors and brick-and-mortars coexist, and where access to opportunity is made available to all of our city's small businesses. I look forward to moving the remaining packages, the remaining bills in this package. Thank you, Speaker, thank you, Chair Brennan, gonna miss you. Thank you, Tanisha, Richard, the whole Finance Division, all of, all of the OGs, as Althea said, who have really guided the way for us new members in the last two cycles. Thank you for everything that you've done for us, Jeremy FISA and the whole team. I'd also want to, want to do a special shout-out to Carla Dominguez, my legislative fellow, who's just a boss. Speaker, you keep giving us excellent fellows, and we don't want to let them go. Thank you, Carla, thank you, Gerard, and to my whole team. With that, I vote aye on all, with the exception of Land Use 297, and its accompanying resolution, on which I vote no.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I am disclosing on the record of the council proceedings
I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the Office of the Mayor of the City of New York is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my sibling is associated with that entity. I want to congratulate, thank, and congratulate the Speaker and her staff with a special shout-out to Jeremy and Fiza, and the finance staff, who've been amazing, led by Richard Lee, and answered all the complicated questions that my staff had. And I want to give extremely special shout-out to my Chief of Staff, Jonathan Boucher, and my Budget and Legislative Director, Kevin McElair, who really kept it together and was instrumental in some of the successes we've had in the district. When I started out in politics, a wise political mentor said to me, even when facing a budget deficit, you can't cut. You have to invest. And invest is what this council did with education, immigration, and housing as three major examples. I've worked on many budgets, both as a city council staffer and council member, and don't recall any being as robust and inclusive as the budget we are passing today. For FY '26, the council was able to baseline nearly $700 million in funding beyond anyone's expectations for libraries, and public schools, CUNY, older adults, gender violence, culture and art, housing, HIV/AIDS, composting, parks, sanitation, and so much more. These baseline items will now become a permanent part of the budget in future years. While there are many details you will hear about in the days to come, I want to especially point out the over $1 billion with a B dollar investment in education from pre-K to 3K with funds carved out for preschool, special education students, all the way up to our public higher education institutions. I am proud of the efforts we have made in this budget and look forward to continuing to work with the Speaker and my colleagues on building a better Queens and a better city for all New Yorkers. And with that, I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Salamanca.
Yes, I have one more disclosure. Gotham Health is funded in this budget, and my spouse sits on their board of this entity.
Thank you. Ung.
I want to thank Speaker Adams, the entire team for leadership in passing a budget that truly delivers all of New York. And I want to express my deep appreciation to Chair Brennan, the finance staff, big shout-out to Richard. And with that, I vote aye on all, except 47B, for I abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. Vernikov.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. Today, we vote for a budget that, like all budgets, is imperfect. Yet, like in the past, my commitment to public safety, community needs, and enhancing quality of life for my constituents compel me to vote yes, despite much we do not approve of. However, I am unequivocal on Land Use Item 297, Coney Island de-mapping action for proposed casino development in Coney Island. This de-mapping makes the casino application and proposed development more likely to take place. Therefore, I must vote against it, as over the past many months, and at this point, years, it has become clear that a majority in the community do not want a casino in Coney Island. For those at least 20,000 residents who signed the petition clearly saying no to the Coney, I have heard you, I agree with you, and I will keep fighting for you. Today's setback does not mean that the battle is lost. Economic development does not need to take place throughout, does need to take place throughout the area, but this is not it. It should not come at the expense of public safety, infrastructure, and our quality of life. With that, I vote aye on all, with the exception of Intro 47B, Resos 961, 962, 978, M154, 817, 931, and LU 297 with the accompanying Resolution 981. Thank you.
Thank you. Williams.
Thank you. I am disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the Children's Rescue Fund, which is funded in the budget we are adopting, is affiliated with, my sibling is affiliated with this nonprofit, CUNY also that we're funding. I am still affiliated with CUNY. And Queens and Lummy Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, I am associated with that nonprofit. And I just really wanted to thank, as everyone has thanked, so just lending my thanks to Speaker Adams, Chair Brennan, Jeremy Fiza, Richard Lee, Tanisha, Esha, Jonathan, Chima, Florentine, and Ally, and the entire, I know I miss people, but the entire Finance Division for all their hard work. And with that, I vote aye.
One.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
The learning experience is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my child is associated with that entity. Thank you so much to Speaker Adams, colleagues on the negotiation team, Chair Brennan, and all the finance staff. We have so much to celebrate this year with all of the new additions and balancing nearing $116 billion in this budget. Some of the highlights that we have heard from many of our colleagues is the $10 million to launch a new childcare program for 2K, 2.5 million for the AAPI curriculum, 2 million to bring back seven-day library services at 10 additional branches, 74.7 for immigration legal services, 10.2 million for additional parks, staff, and more. But as Chair of Contracts Committee, I want to celebrate the funding allocated to the Mayor's Office of Contract Services, an agency that plays a vital role in making sure that all of these items that we have funded actually is paid out to those who are delivering these essential services, especially our nonprofit providers. So this year, since adoption, the total is going to be over $12 million to boost the Contracts Committee for investments in passport, OTPS, as well as baselining funding for the nonprofit Health Desk. And we want to make sure that Mayor's Office of Contracts continues to get resources, and providers no longer face delays or go unpaid, and programs are not shut down. And we want to make sure that these investments help keep these vital services, like our shelters, our food pantry providers, mental health, and so much more, continue to go. So thank you to everybody in the finance team that worked really hard to negotiate this budget, and I look for four more years to negotiating with you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, sorry. And I want to say that I vote aye on this budget, except for Intro LU 297 and Reso 861. Thank you.
My apologies, Councilmember. What was the reso you said? Can you repeat that? My apologies.
Yes. One second, I'm pulling it back up. 861. Oh, sorry, 981, the accompanying reso.
And you're voting no, right?
Yes.
Thank you. My apologies. Thank you. Zhuang.
Um, here, I want to disclose on the record of the City Council proceeding that New York City Department of Education and the Jewish, Marx Jewish Council House are funded in the budget we are adopting today, and my children are associated with those entities. And can I explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Our colleagues already thanked our Speaker, and also everyone involved in the budget negotiating. I want to thank everyone who worked so hard to work on this budget. And also, I want to give a special shout-out to our Speaker. She actually the one who helped my community. First time we have, we will have the restorative justice service in my area. This is first time. And we, our community doesn't even know what is restorative justice mean. So we, this year, we have enough funding for training the community leaders to help the community. And also, I vote yes on the budget, I, on the budget, except I want to abstain, Intro 47B, LU 297, Reso 981, Reso 961, 962, 978, and M154.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Ariola.
I'm disclosing on the record for the council proceedings that the New York City Department of Sanitation is funded in this budget that we're adopting, and my son is associated with that entity. I'd just like to take a moment to give my condolences to the firefighters who lost their lives in Idaho and those who are fighting for their lives. Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. Speaker Adams, we go back a very long time, and during that time, you have always acted with dignity and grace. And to your last budget, you did it right to the end. So I want to thank you for that. I want to thank your entire team. You saw me through many things: becoming a council member, becoming the Chair of Fire and Emergency Management. And I want to thank my colleagues who funded fire department projects. You helped me and guided me through so many things. You made my transition to Minority Leader so seamless, and I loved working with your team. I love working with Jeremy, with Fiza, with Jeff Baker, who really, they never know when I'm going to call, but yet they always pick up. So thank you for that. Thank you to the entire finance team. I can be proud to vote on this budget because it really does address the initiatives that mean the most to my district and the district of the council members in this minority caucus that I represent, like roadways, schools, parks, sanitation, education, public safety, CBOs like ACE and CEO because of the draconian cuts to litter basket and lot cleaning by the Mayor's Office. I really appreciate that. Also, I do agree with the immigration services, like CUNY Citizenship Now, which works out of my office every Monday and does a great job helping people become citizens. Congratulations, Frank, on your first budget. I would not be able to do this without my dream team of Peter Spencer and Philip Sin Cirillo. People just shake when they see them coming, as well as my Budget Director, Karen Grace Donley. Majority Leader, I want to thank you for your leadership, as well as the Majority Whip. I know she's not here, but we work very well together. On that note, I look forward to talking now to the people who will be leaving us. Whether we agreed or not, we learned from each other along the way, and that's how I feel. And even minds were changed along the way, and I think that's great. And we are going to, at least, I can speak for my delegation, and I think for most of the new people coming in and those who are remaining, we're going to take that pay-it-forward way and just pay that forward to the new people coming in, so we look forward to that. I will now vote. I am aye on all, with the exception of Intro 47B, Resos 961, 962, 978, with accompanying Reso 154. I am aye on all the rest. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, wait, I have a few seconds left. I want to thank my minority whip, Vicky Palladino, Kristi Bar Menardo, and Frank for sticking it out with me. But my minority whip, we're side by side. We fight together. We fight for what's right for our delegation, and thank you for always hearing us. Appreciate it.
Farias.
Thank you. I'd like to just give a quick and huge thank you to Richard, Tanisha, Chima, Florentine, and all of the Finance Division for their hard work. Speaker Adams, obviously, for your leadership. And the Speaker's team, our Budget Negotiation Team, our Finance Chair, Justin Brennan, and all of my colleagues in the Progressive Caucus. Also additionally, OGC, Public Integrity Unit, led by Franz Alavecchia, Alicia Vassal, and the rest of the PIU team for their hard work in vetting the countless nonprofits included in this budget. And lastly, my Chief of Staff, Rebecca Nieves, for holding it down this budget cycle. And with that, I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Speaker Adams.
I am disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the Pearls and Ivy Foundation of Queens is funded in the budget we're adopting, and I'm associated with that entity, and that the Fire Department of the City of New York is funded in the budget we're adopting, and my dear daughter is associated with that entity. This is budget number eight, and I sincerely thank my colleagues for their hard work and Assemblyman, Assemblyman, Councilmember Powers was absolutely right. We have not thanked my General, Justin Brennan, nearly enough today, as we should, for all of his marathon work and all of the hearings. Justin, I watched you just, I mean, over these years, just ascend into such an amazing financial chief for this body. And you still got change. So that, some went over some people's heads, but anyway. Mad respect for you and the work that we've done together for my colleagues, whose last budget, this will be, whose eighth budget this is for us, who we started this journey with together in 2017. What an amazing journey we've been on. It has been my honor to serve with all of you. Althea called us OGs. Well, okay, I'll take it, I'll take it. It has been marvelous serving with all of you, seeing all of the things that we've seen through this council. I say hooray and congratulations to us on passing a phenomenal budget for the City of New York. I believe that we have unanimously passed this budget today. I applaud all of you colleagues, and I do indeed vote aye.
All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 51 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, with the exception of LU 297 and Resolution 981, which was adopted by a vote of 36 in the affirmative, 11 in the negative, and 4 abstentions. And Introduction 47B, which was adopted by a vote of 40 in the affirmative, 8 in the negative, and 3 abstentions. And Resolution 961 and 962, which were adopted by a vote of 41 in the affirmative, 10 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. And M154 and Resolution 978, which was adopted by a vote of 41 in the affirmative, 10 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. We will now move into introduction and reading of bills. Madam Speaker, we're moving into introduction and reading of bills.
I got so excited. Oh, my gosh. Okay. All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We will now move into the discussion of resolutions, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Nurse.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I know we have one more thing to do. We're almost done. It's a serious one, though. Reso 931 is a moral statement that condemns the Trump administration's white nationalist agenda to kidnap and disappear immigrants from our city and send them to foreign prisons, some of which they may never come out of. And people are being ripped from their homes, they're being deported without any proceeding and sent to places that they have no relationship to. And I'm just really grateful that we're able to advance this at the last minute. You know, it's just really alarming to think about this pig in the city that somehow gets to stay with a family, and young people, and pregnant women, and mothers, and high schoolers are being ripped from their families without the same level of support. So I just urge an affirmative vote on Reso 931. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Seeing no one else signed up to speak, we will now have a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolutions into the record. Resolution 817 calls on the New York State Legislature to provide the necessary funds to ensure hospital and healthcare provider services for gender-affirming care remain accessible for all people in New York City. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 931 condemns the Trump administration for disappearing immigrants to prisons in other countries. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into general discussion, and I'd like to recognize Councilmembers Riley, followed by Brewer, Sanchez, then Narcisse.
Folks, we're not done yet.
Quiet.
Councilmembers, please quieten the chambers.
Thank you. I'll be really quick. Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm proud to introduce two resolutions that celebrate and support Black men and Black boys in our city. First, I'm partnering with Councilmember Chris Banks to introduce Resolution 969, which will make October Black Boy Joy Month in New York City. Too often, Black boys are seen only through struggle, but they are leaders, creators, and joyful. I know I was once a boy a very long time ago. This resolution is about showing them that the city sees their strength and believes in their future. It was inspired by the young men that are here today, once strong brotherhood, which consists of Kadim Osman, Musa Solomon, James, Shamar, Kingford, Isaiah, Ishmael, and Abu Bar, Abukar, excuse me, who created a platform where Black boys can be curious, expressive, and proud. From Pilates to voting, they redefine the narrative and really are inspiring change. The second resolution I'm introducing is 968, which supports fatherhood center legislation from the Senate, S5228, and Assembly Bill A9811, by Senator Jamal T. Bailey and Assembly Member Landon Dais. I urge my colleagues to support these bills with uplifting boys of color within our communities and fathers within our communities to strengthen our communities within their families. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much. Two things. Reso 963 talks about the issue of Penny and the Chihuahua and the individual dogs that have bit the Chihuahua. This has created a lot of havoc. I had no idea that biting one dog and another is not legal. So it's mostly focused on Albany, but I want to say that we have to do something about it. Number two, great interns: Diego Figuero from City College, Colin Powell School, Ignacio Hale Brown, Columbia University, Eliza MacGrilly School, and Lyndsey Jones, Richfield High School, Amelia Corantes, Packer Collegiate, Miller Shulman, who is a wonderful Van Fellow from Seton Hall, and Isad Ahmed, who's a Harvard University student, Alex Hayes Middlebury, Bicola Chirica, City College, Eric Gollum, Middlebury, and Olivia Sohn, Washington University. Thank you, interns, for all of your support. Thank you. They're all here today. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Sanchez.
I just want to thank District 14 for your support last Tuesday. I love you, community.
Recognizing Councilmember Narcisse.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the bill that I have here in front of me is 1331. It's about the jail population, so please read on it. We need to know statistic and what's going on in our jail in New York City. What I have learned today is, in this chamber, things can be difficult, people can be difficult, but life is a full circle. We could not be on the same page for many things, but today is a beautiful day for New York City. We got on the same page for New York City budget. Not perfect, but beautiful budget for beautiful people in New York City. Life is a journey. If you are from New York City, life is just like a train. People come and go. Or like a book. You turn many pages, you learn, and much you have to keep turning the pages, and sometimes you have to get a new book. But today, I want to say thank you to my Chief of Staff that is living in our office. I loved her. She has been amazing. She's smart. She's strong. She's, how could I say? All the beautiful things. Hard-working human being. I have to force to say goodbye, but I know she's going to do amazing thing wherever she goes. So I want to say, Saye Joseph, thank you for your leadership and thank you for being the person you are. Congratulations. Whatever you do in life, you're going to be amazing. Thank you. I say congratulations because people make steps in life, and it can be beautiful, no matter what happens. So I appreciate you, and thank you all for the budget. I love you, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else signed up to speak, I now formally declare that the Executive Expense Revenue Contract Budget, the Executive Capital Budget, and the Community Development Program for Fiscal Year 2026 have been hereby adopted as modified and in accordance with the Charter of the City of New York as of 5:59 PM on this 30th day of June 2025. I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. For all of